Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, December 7, 2016. Could I have a roll call, please?
Dan Carey, Peg Coniff, Salem Derby.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Gazinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Okay, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes of October 19th, November 2nd, and November 16th?
Second.
Okay, motion's second, so I'm gonna have an approval, but if you happen to be out, just let us know which of those minutes you're saying you're abstaining from. So, all those in favor, aye. Are there any abstentions? Okay, Counselor Derby.
November 16th.
November 16th.
October 19th.
October 19th.
Counselor Winnie, October 19th.
Enjoy.
Does that catch everybody? Okay, I think so. Oh, Counselor Hayes?
I had a question about the minutes. I had read a statement, and I know other counselors have read statements, should we be putting the full statement in the minutes?
I put them in if I have them.
Okay.
If you want something in the minutes, you need to send it through.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Perfect, great. Thank you, okay, we'll try to speak louder for you. Moving on, I'm trying to, I'm taking things a little bit out of order, usually we have public speak time, I'm gonna move to mayoral comments first, so the mayor can speak. So Mayor Khadjar, are you here? Are you there?
Good evening, everybody, it's so nice to see so many people interested in our community. We thought that, the chief and I, that if we were here together tonight, we could explain some things that I think would probably relieve some people's concerns. Regarding all the requests for what has been requested as a sanctuary city, I wanted to actually first start off by clearing what the word sanctuary, so what you've been hearing has been done in other communities is not a sanctuary city. So typically, what you've seen done in your surrounding communities that you've been talking about is actually an executive order. And what has been done in these executive orders, and this is what the chief and I and feel would probably relieve a lot of concerns of a lot of people, is in an executive order, which would be an order that would be prepared by me and signed off on the chief, is actually a summarization of what our police policies are on undocumented immigrants, you know, in this instance. And by reading that, like in our policies, and that's why I have the chief here with me, because nobody knows the police policy is better than him, and what actually happens in that is, you know, just putting, most of these are, first of all, state-approved. They're not really individual to each community. Most of your, anything on undocumented immigrants, or, they're mostly state law. So, that's why I have the chief here, so that he could, he could provide, you know, some information on that. So, again, to probably get rid of a little bit of miscommunication and some misunderstandings and relieve some of people's concerns as to, you know, the word sanctuary, it's typically not a word that should be used in this instance. And I also wanted to say that we've been collecting information, and I've had discussions with, and thankfully to Counselor Tamara Smith, she has done an enormous amount of research on this issue. And I've also spoken to Counselor, Dan Carey has stopped in my office, as has our council president, Joe McCoy. So, we've been reviewing documents and going over things and discussing it, and I think this would probably help relieve a lot of the concerns of our community. And obviously, because of the Facebook issue, I've been receiving so many requests against a sanctuary, for a sanctuary, and again, the word sanctuary really needs to be removed from this discussion. Now, another issue has come up, which is a request for an ordinance. An ordinance would be, you know, typically, the city counselors would send an ordinance request to their subcommittee, their ordinance subcommittee, for discussion. So what you've seen in other communities are executive orders, and then sometimes also to accompany them, resolutions by the city council to accompany, to support the executive order. Okay? So, I have our chief here, and I think he'd like to go over, you know, pretty much the procedures that we have in place now, that are typically the procedures of state and national, or federal, local.
Good evening, Bob Alberti, I'm the police chief here in East Hampton. What my objective tonight is to provide you with some past practices and policies that we've engaged in and continue to engage in, and some of it may come as a surprise to you. I'll start with 2014 policy that we have for immigration, and it's, we, it's titled for us, it's called a U-Visa. And what that is, is essentially, any immigrants, regardless of their status, if they're a victim or a witness to a crime, and they come forward, they have certain rights under this policy, and quite frankly, under federal law. We have the ability to offer victims in these instances work authorization, protection from deportation, and we actually walk these immigrants through, applying for and successfully obtaining a U-Visa based on their witness and/or victim status. So I wanted to bring, because I know there was a lot of conversation, both social media and amongst members of the community, about protecting our community, immigrants and everyone else, when it comes to being victimized or being witnesses to a crime. We investigate crimes, we're, you know, we do a lot of things, but one of the things we do is criminal in nature, criminal investigation. So to that end, for us, it doesn't matter, really, what walk of life you come from, where you come from, what planet you come from. If you commit a crime in our community, we're going to charge you, and we're gonna prosecute you, and quite frankly, we're gonna bring you to justice. So, any immigration status is really immaterial to us when it comes to victimizing our community or committing crimes in our community. So, it's a completely separate entity. I can tell you, as far as obtaining immigration status of people in our community, my officers, I can tell you, in my career, I can think of maybe twice that any of my patrol officers had reached out to our federal partners, whether it would be Department of Homeland Security, or ICE, and in those instances, they were investigating criminal activity, and they were trying to ascertain a legit identity of the people that they were investigating. So, we never will stop people, cars, drivers, and investigate their immigration status. It just, that doesn't happen. I, me personally, when I worked in the federal task forces, I did it all the time, but it was, it was, it was, and again, it was investigating criminal activity. So even when I was in the federal task forces, we never went out of our way just to chase people down and obtain their immigration status. We were, I was investigating drug traffickers, I was investigating potential terrorists, all of which, I think, us as a community, would want to do our due diligence to make sure these people aren't setting up shop in our community. So there's, there's a couple of different things going on here. Twice, like I said, twice in my career, if any of my officers had reached out to immigration, it was because they were trying to ascertain the identity of a criminal, a subject of a criminal investigation, which means they rose to the level of either reasonable suspicion or probable cause to try to identify who these people are. So it's not a car stop, and I'm just gonna call immigration. First of all, we don't, quite frankly, I don't have the resources and the time and the, and the, my officers don't have the management approval to just continuously call immigration, it just doesn't happen. We're always running short, we don't have the manpower, we certainly don't have the authorization, or it's not in our purview to investigate immigration issues, that's a federal crime. So at best, we can look out, reach out to our federal partners on a criminal investigation, trying to ascertain identity. That's typically where any of our immigration contact comes from. So, with that, it's, either somebody is arrested, and we're trying to ascertain who that person is, a viable suspect in a criminal incident, my detectives will, once in a very blue moon, reach out to our federal partners. And so for us, it's really more from a criminal standpoint, from a crime standpoint, not necessarily, I don't, we just don't have the time or the manpower to go around town, and there's a big difference between a sixth grade kid who may not, may or may not be here legally, and a criminal who has set up shop in East Hampton to move mountains of cocaine, and shouldn't be here, and should be arrested for poisoning our community. Big difference. The guy set up shop, the criminal, if he's, if he, if he's an illegal immigrant, and he's a criminal, we don't want him in our community to begin with, we're gonna put him in jail, most likely, and then the Department of Corrections is gonna handle all the immigration stuff with the, with our federal partners. So, I'm not sure where the groundswell is as far as the police department goes, I can just tell you what we do, we have policies in place to protect immigrants regardless of their status, especially if they're victims or witnesses of a crime. We don't, it's not our policy, has never been past practice to go root out our community to find out who should be here and who shouldn't be here. Quite frankly, I don't have time to do that, I don't know who does, I don't think the government has enough resources and manpower to do that. So that's really, from me, I'll field any questions, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what our policies are, what we do, what we don't do. Probably what we don't do is more important, because there's a mindset that, you know, the police are 1944 Berlin, you know, that's not what goes on here.
And the other thing that the chief and I, as we were reviewing these executive orders that, you know, that you've been hearing about, what they are, is they are a reiteration of what the policy is of the department.
Correct.
And in no way are they violating any federal laws, or is that their intention. And I just wanna make mention, I know we're, you know, getting close to our public hearing time, but I wanna make mention that there's, I'm very happy to, there's a gentleman here I'm very happy to see, his name is Jeff Napolitano, and he has actually worked with a lot of communities on this issue, and he has a lot of really very, very detailed information. And I hope that when we get to that point, President, he'll be able to start, lead out, and I think he can eliminate and answer a lot of questions, eliminate a lot of concerns and fears of the public that's here tonight.
We're a step ahead of you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. We are at public's hearing time, let me explain to everyone what the policy is. So at 6:15 PM, we have set up a couple of financial items we have to go through, it shouldn't take any more, hopefully than 20 minutes. We'll then come back to public speak time, which is where everyone here can have an opportunity to make comments. As the mayor alluded to, I will have Mr. Napolitano come up, because he has a wealth of background about sanctuary cities, what it means, what the different types are, and about something that will be coming up, educational form. But in the meantime, I do have to handle this financial matter, so I entertain a motion to open public hearings.
Some of.
I wanted to ask Chief Alberti a question, please.
Okay.
Motion's on the table.
We have a motion, a second on the table. You know, I think he'll come back, so why don't, he'll be here to address me, so since we have a motion, I'd like to get this finance, come back, then we're gonna come back to that whole, we're gonna come back to that whole topic, so let's just get the finance, and we'll come back to the whole topic. So anyway, all those in favor for opening public hearings, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passed, public hearing open. Counselor Coniff.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items for public hearing, they're essentially together, they are around a cost of living adjustment, one is the ordinance for it, and the other is the supplemental appropriation. Mayor, can you speak to those items?
Absolutely, thank you, Tech. So, the public hearing you have here before you tonight is a supplemental appropriation request that I have prepared from Free Cash, and what the amount is, it's the $19,946, and this is a 1.5 percent COLA for the pay plan people. So it's the only non-union group, we try, since my administration has been here, I try to put them in line with what the labor unions receive, and also, we do these in January, so they're not included in the budgets that you, that you approve in June. And there's two parts to it, because the pay plan people are paid off a schedule, which is a wage scale, which is Exhibit B, so it changes the whole, the whole wage scale. And so every amount on there changes by the one and a half percent. So I hope you'll look favorably on this request, but it's two steps, one is the financing, but the other is actually the wage scale that reflects the financing.
So Mayor, the $19,000 is just from January of 2017 through July 2017, when the new budget starts, that money will be built into the budget.
That's correct, that, and actually, it works perfect, because that would, that would go into effect January 1st, and it would cover us right, straight through to the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th. And I really appreciate the Finance Committee putting this through and getting the public hearing scheduled so fast, so that we could have this in place, if approved tonight, for January, so we don't have to go back and do retros. So it makes it, it makes the bookkeeping a lot easier in our payroll department.
Do you have anything more to add, Counselor Coniff?
No, both of these, the ordinance and the change to the supplemental appropriation were both passed 3 to 0 in the Finance Committee.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address this supplemental appropriation? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Being seen, Counselor Coniff, entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance known as classification and pay plan by substituting Exhibit B salary and wage scale as on file in the office of the city clerk dated January 1, 2016, with the attached Exhibit B salary and wage scale dated January 1, 2017, and to establish the effective date of said substitution as January 1, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to change the pay plan and classification ordinance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And I'd like to make a motion on the supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested, $19,946, to be appropriated from Free Cash, to be appropriated to Pay Plan Employee Personnel Services. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a 1.5 percent pay plan increase.
Yes, there was a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve the supplemental appropriation of $19,946. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. That was painless. Intertain a motion to close public hearings.
So moved.
Second, motion to public hearing, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. So public hearing is done, we can move back on. So, I'd like to follow up, as Chief Alberti did offer to take questions, unfortunately it's only from the council, if you don't mind, Captain Albert, Chief Alberti, Counselor Hayes.
Hi, Chief, thank you. I really appreciate you coming and clarifying everything like that. I believe that your past practices do indicate that that is not really a giant issue for East Hampton. I did just wanna mention that a lot of the emails and questions that we've gotten, and some of the impetus for putting this forward, I believe, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I get this wrong, but there is a concern that with this new administration, that there may be other sorts of federal tasks that they would want police officers to do, so it's not any.
The presidential administration?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because there seems to be, like, some negativity towards people's religions and stuff like that, that there would be new, sorry, that there may be, like, new criteria in addition to, like, immigration, and that this would be something that would help with that, so.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a question? What was your question?
That, it's not necessarily all about, like, past practices, but it's to, a measure to kind of put in place to prevent, if there's any new federal regulations that are gonna discriminate against individuals.
Do you know what those new federal regulations that discriminate are?
No, but people seem to think there's a potential for them, so I just wanted to mention that.
Well, I mean, we can't, there's not, you know, we're, we're a law, a land of laws, obviously.
Yeah.
If we don't know what those laws are, aren't we kind of putting that cart in front of the horse?
That could be one way to look at it, sure, but it could also be that people want protections in place in case there is a situation where there is a rounding up of a certain demographic that comes down the pike, so.
It's conjecture, Counselor.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying that that's what's come through in emails, and that's some of the reasons why people are looking to get us labeled as a sanctuary city, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, let me tell you, again, I put it out on Facebook, and just so people understood they weren't disappointed or surprised, we, under public speak time, we are upheld to what's called Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws, and that's a transparency thing, so that if this wasn't, like we just did on a public hearing, if people didn't know that this was gonna be discussed, it wouldn't be fair for us to be discussing it without everyone else knowing it. So that's why, when we have you up here to speak, we can't discuss it with you, because we didn't advertise it was going to be discussed. There's nothing that we don't want to talk about this, it's not, we can't talk about, we can't talk about, so anyway, that's, that's one rule about why we can't engage during public speak time. There are so many of you too, I would hope that you would like to keep it to about a couple of minutes. If something, if somebody got up and said something similar to what you're saying, it might be easier if you could pass on it, but certainly, if something you really wanna say, you are more than welcome to take your two minutes to do so. I am going to have, there is someone here, believe it or not, for public speak time, other than the sanctuary city, I'm gonna ask that person to come up first. And then, as also mentioned, Mr. Napolitano, I'm gonna have him lead off the general public speak time. Counselor Winnie, just a second.
Mister, Mister President, I just wanna inform the public here that the ordinance will be presented to the city council, and we will not act on it tonight. It will go down into ordinance subcommittee, as all ordinance proposals do. Anything that's brought in front of city councils never acted on the night that it's brought to us, unless it's an exception to the rule, like a snow emergency, something like that. It's always voted, put down into subcommittee, where it's fully vetted down into subcommittee, where then it is brought back into public hearing, if it needs to be, which it would be an ordinance, for discussion, for vote. And that could take.
And the subcommittee will probably have more public.
Public speak time during that, so.
More public discussion.
At least two opportunities to formally speak on the subject.
Correct.
So you will have a chance to have a discussion.
And we'll be on the agenda, however, folks may be wanting to talk about a subject.
That's, that's fine, I'm just.
Exactly. Counselor Hayes, you have something else you want to say?
And also, we got a lot of emails, some of them were sent to individual counselors, some of them were sent to all of us, we're all copied. What I did, is I made sure that I replied to everybody, and I promised everybody I would make sure that your opinion, whether it was pro or con, was heard and entered. So I printed everything out, I'm gonna hand that to Barbara, I also made everything a PDF, and I will PDF that to everybody, and I encourage all city counselors who did get emails from individuals to put those forward, so that we can get a balanced group of, like, how many we got that were for this, and how many were anti. I just wanna make sure, like, everybody feels represented, so those emails mattered, and they're going into the public record.
Okay, so, with that being said, we can start, oh, the other thing is, if you do come up just for the record, if you can state your name and address for our record, but to begin with, the other public hearing, other than the sanctuary city.
Thank you, I'll be brief. My name is Janet Tetrow, I live at 412 East Street. I'm here representing the East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, just to briefly tell you about a new project that we recently completed, that we're really excited about. Over the summer, we worked with East Hampton Media to create a segment, a video segment on affordable housing in East Hampton. It's posted on the East Hampton Media page, if you go to On Demand, Government Housing Partnership. It's also posted on the Cities Housing Partnership page on easthampton.org. And the segment features our former mayor, Mike Tausnick, as the moderator, and generally gives some information about affordable housing in East Hampton. It features Jessica Allen, our town planner, talking about East Hamptons, what, you know, our context, or where we are within the community, and our neighbors, talks about the definition of affordable housing, some of our constraints. Also features Joanne Campbell from Valley CDC as a developer, talking about affordable housing, and I think the, to me, the most exciting part is three residents of affordable housing, one renter, one homeowner, and one homeowner who lives in a mixed income condo association, talking about why it's important to them, what brought them to East Hampton. So I just wanted to, you know, do a little plug, because we are excited that it's completed, I hope that you'll all watch it, it is 39 minutes long, so in your spare time, and I, the Housing Partnership welcomes your comments after you've seen it, and we do plan to do some more outreach in 2017.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just in case, is there any?
I actually have a something else thing.
Yes, well terrific, then, I was gonna double check that, okay?
So, good evening, my name is Erin Levin, I live at 3 Franklin Street in East Hampton in Joyce District. In addition, my something else thing is just to make a simple announcement, as a member of the Grants Committee here for East Hampton City Arts, I just wanted to let everybody know that at our November meeting, we awarded over $9,000 in grant money to some wonderful, well-deserving artists and proposals, and I just wanted to let everybody know that 2017 is going to be a banner year for the arts here in East Hampton. We actually received more applications for grant money than we have in the years that I have been on the committee, and I think it's really exciting that people, when they think about East Hampton, they really think about the arts. So, look forward to that in 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you, awesome.
Okay, so again, now, I believe, unless there's anyone else who has a comment other than the sanctuary city issue, feel free to come up. Okay? Check your phones, too. Okay, so we're gonna start, as I said, I'd like to start with Mr. Jeff Napolitano, he's from the American Friends Service Committee, has a great background as far as sanctuary cities, what they mean, what the type, and he'll probably mention this too, but let me put a plug in first. They are sponsoring a forum, Sanctuary, What Does It Mean for East Hampton, 7:00 PM, East Works, tentative location, the community room, which is first floor 160, which is 116 Pleasant Street, December 15th, so Thursday, so if you wanna learn more about it, I believe he may mention it as well, but I just wanted to put that out there. So Mr. Napolitano, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, as I, as you mentioned, I work at the American Friends Service Committee, or AFSC, and we cover western Massachusetts. My comments should take no longer than 2 minutes and 30 seconds, there is a lot to say about it, but that's why we're having this forum next week, next Thursday, on the 15th. So I'm here to talk about the prospect of East Hampton passing an ordinance, or the possibility of an executive order that would make East Hampton a sanctuary city. I was involved in writing in passing the resolutions in Springfield, Northampton, and Amherst several years ago, that although the term was never used in those acts, designated them what some folks are calling sanctuary cities. Sanctuary city is not a legal definition, and to be honest, not a very useful definition. It's not a very descriptive term, it's been using, rather, it's been getting a lot of use in the past several years, especially in the last election cycle, but mostly to scare people about immigrants. For anybody who is scared by the prospect of their home being called a sanctuary city, let's start by stating that most cities and towns in the United States are let's start by stating that most cities and towns in the United States are effectively sanctuary cities. If you weren't worried yesterday about East Hampton being a sanctuary city, then the passage of an ordinance or an executive order will change virtually nothing, although it will create a basic safeguard for the community should a problem arise in the future. What a sanctuary city designation implies is that municipalities will not use their resources to conduct federal immigration law. In recent history, there's been two instances, two means for municipalities to do this. One is by deputizing their police officers as immigration agents, and secondly, by voluntarily detaining suspected undocumented immigrants for forty-eight hours until immigration agents pick them up from local jails. That first method, the deputizing local officers to do immigration work, saw an increase under the Bush administration, until instances of racial profiling and a breakdown of cooperation with police, which corresponded actually ironically with rises in crime, caused the Bush administration and then later the Obama administration to deprioritize that program, although it still is on the books. The second program, called Secure Communities, also created breakdown in trust within communities and perhaps most importantly, put financial burdens on police and municipal governments. So, a sanctuary city ordinance or an executive order, like the one that's existed in Los Angeles for thirty years, or San Francisco, or Philadelphia, those aren't very controversial and they shouldn't be. Even those in law enforcement, such as the Major Cities Police Chiefs Association, have imposed, opposed rather, the imposition of immigration duties on the departments because it has such a destructive force within communities, also costs communities. Last week, South Carolina Senator Lindsey Graham stated that he was going to introduce a bill to protect undocumented children. With even very conservative politicians supporting the rights of immigrants, yes, East Hampton and every city in state needs to have more conversations and pass measures like sanctuary ordinances or executive orders. But this will not alone stop racist incidents and it will not stop workplace raids by ICE, so I encourage folks to also think about other ways to maintain the integrity of your community. To that end, we're going to be hosting this forum next Thursday, tentatively at the Eastworks Building, so please come, listen and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now, general public, if you could just try to be oral again, try to keep it to a couple of minutes, and just, you can line up, and again, if you could just state your name and address, that would be terrific.
Okay. I'm just, I might give you two seconds. Annette Segal, Mother Street. Thank you. I didn't understand sanctuary city and any of that, and I feel much more informed now, so I'm glad we're having this discussion. This is what we should be doing, is having an open discussion, and I feel much better now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Peterkin, I live at 10 Gaston Street. So, I just wanted to give people an idea of who the undocumented immigrants in this community are, because I'm not sure if many of you have met them. And there's a reason why many of you haven't met them, it's because they lay low, work hard and take care of their families. I've met scores of people who are undocumented in western Massachusetts, and without exception, they work long hours, they take care of their families, and they just want to live in a safe, good community like East Hampton. The people I think in particular who live in East Hampton and are undocumented are married to American citizens and are raising children with them, and I just wanted to express my support for them to be able to continue to live in a safe community such as East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaye Collins, I live at 4 Carol Ave in East Hampton, and I did come today to speak out in support of both Jennifer's Human Rights, Proposed Human Rights Ordinance to counteract any discrimination or hate speech, which we like to think of East Hampton as a bubble, and we like to think that that sort of thing doesn't happen here, but as we all know with what happened on Mount Tom, it does creep in, and I wanted to make sure that both with the Human Rights Ordinance and the Declaration of a Sanctuary City, that we are protecting the people in our community that are most vulnerable. You know, I will say this, my full civil right to marry the person that I love is a recent thing. You know, I was married before I was fully protected under the law, and I know that myself and a lot of people in our queer community, the word marriage isn't as important as our equal protection under the law and our right to walk the streets without having to feel vulnerable and to feel like we are going to be targeted. So, whether we call it sanctuary city by name, or whether we just have protections in place for the people in our community who are the most vulnerable, I don't care what it's called, I just want to be in a place that is a haven for people the way it's been a haven for me, so I want to just speak out in support of whatever it takes to make our city that kind of place. Thank you.
My name is Sequoia McDowell, I live at 27 Spring Street in East Hampton. I am here as well to speak out in support of a ordinance, executive order, proposal, et cetera, for, to designate East Hampton a sanctuary city, or whatever verbiage is preferred. The, I'm mostly echoing points from Chief Alberti and Mr. Napolitano that attempting to enforce federal immigration law on the local level is going to cost a city money, it's going to come out of our coffers, and as an East Hampton taxpayer and homeowner, I'm not interested in chasing whatever, pursuing whatever aggressive policies the federal government hands down, especially if they're not going to hand down some money with it. It makes a community less safe, as Mr. Napolitano pointed out. When we have, and perhaps Chief Alberti can, you know, speak to this, I don't want to, I don't know very much about policing directly, but my understanding is that if there are portions of the community who are afraid to call the police, then that is going to make our community less safe. If there are victims, witnesses, et cetera. One thing that I didn't hear come up so far is the legal liability that the city could potentially be exposed to if we are, if the, if our local police are pursuing ICE detainers. I know one case recently was, or a few years ago, was related in Allentown, PA, where they detained someone that they presumed to be an undocumented immigrant for about forty-eight hours. It turned out he was not, he was a US citizen, he was racially profiled. All told, he received settlements of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, about ninety-five or a hundred and twenty of that coming from Allentown, PA, and from the county government. And so, what we're looking at besides just the cost of enforcement and detention itself is also the legal liability that we're exposing ourselves or our police officers or our town to, and that's another fiscal consideration. It sounds to me, from what the Police Chief Alberti said, that this is a resolution or some sort of sanctuary city proposal would merely codify existing practice, and so it seems to me on that level to be fairly too extremely uncontroversial as this merely codifies what we are already doing. So, that's what I have to say, and don't make the city coffers cover the cost of federal law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jared Hinkle, 12 Mansfield Drive. I just want to thank the chief for clarifying this. I've been following the Facebook and social media very closely on this. I myself, I am originally from Arizona, grew up thirty miles from the border, so I saw on a daily basis the impact of illegal aliens, and I know for a fact, the local community I grew up in, being thirty miles from the border, they did not actively enforce the immigration laws because they had border patrol for that and immigration. Now, I think with this, going down to the ordinance committee, that sanctuary city should be more clarified, because if you look online, you know, there's a definition of sanctuary city, and a lot of people are, you know, turning it around, you know, and I know for, I know that every, every town receives federal funding, and I think we're afraid that, that the incoming presidential, the incoming president is going to change a bunch of stuff, which he can't change it right off the bat, it takes the American public to change it. So, I think a lot of people are afraid of something that might happen, and we can't look at, we can't really look at on what might happen. All right? Thank you.
My name is Mike Smachinsky, I live in, at 58 Camel Drive here in East Hampton, and I have three points that I want to make. First one is, I've yet to hear where there's any authority for this community, for the mayor, for the police, for the city council, to defy federal law. I haven't heard any of that. You haven't cited any statutory law, you haven't cited any case law, you haven't cited any regulatory law. So, as far as I'm concerned, what you're doing, if you just, if you choose to pass this, is beyond your boundary, beyond your authority. Secondly, it's a matter of public safety. We have people that come into our communities that are illegal immigrants, and they have warrants, and they have committed serious felonies. I'm not saying all of them, not saying that at all. What I am saying is, we need to be able to find these people and need to get them out of the community. So, it is a matter of public safety, and that is your job, far more than anything else, it is public safety. Third, gentlemen, two speakers before me talked about legal liability. I'm a lawyer. I was also a judge advocate in the Marine Corps and in the Coast Guard, did over six hundred court marshals and worked twenty-one years in child abuse cases. So, when I'm talking about liability, I have a little bit of knowledge in this area. You may recall that in the summer of 2015, there was a young lady out in San Francisco named Kate Steinle, and she was murdered by a Mexican illegal immigrant who shot her in front of her father. He had been deported five times, and the city of San Francisco did not enforce their lawful responsibility, and she died. What this really means is, beyond that, city of San Francisco is now being sued for twenty-five million dollars. And that's going to be if they win, that case has not been decided, but if that wins, you have something like that happen in this town, and a citizen or a child gets killed or severely injured, you're looking at millions of dollars, and if there's a death, you're going to start at twenty-five million dollars. So, I'd like you to keep that in mind, and I think you need to do your duty, and if you pass this, I don't think you're doing your duty, and I don't think you're following the law, and I don't think you have our best interests in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
Yeah.
Could just come up for the podium, please.
I'm also an Army veteran, and I agree with everything he said.
Yeah, if you could, I'm sorry, just for the record, if you could say your name.
Oh, my name is Greg Zdlosky, 50 Townhouse Drive. I'm from here originally, I grew up here. I'm eighty-four graduate, I joined the Army right out of high school. For two years, I was quite honestly sitting with my feet up in the airport hangar, and then I got picked for Special Operations Berlin Brigade. Didn't really want to do that, quite honestly. And got put into a pretty precarious situation, had some bullets go by my face. I love this town, and I don't want to see any bad things happen to it, and what that gentleman just said, he's right. So, please, I, listen, I've seen people get pulled out of their car. I saw a woman get pulled out of her car in East Berlin, pulled out of her car, beaten by Soviet troops, thrown by the road. I don't know if she was dead or not, we had to roll. Still to this day, don't know. That's sad. We're lucky we live where we do. Let's protect that, please. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Amelia Thompson, I live at 10 Gaston Street. I would just like to reiterate that I agree with an earlier statement that I think a lot of people are afraid of the unknown. They're afraid of things that they see on the internet and they hear people talking about, they're afraid of federal funding being cut, all these things that aren't, haven't happened and have no factual base. The things that I do know is that we have a president-elect right now who is, who's threatening millions of Americans to take away federal funding, just be, just as his first, has his first act in office. There's an atmosphere of fear and intimidation around this whole thing, and I think people really need to think about what they're afraid of, if that has any basis at all. I also love East Hampton, I've only been here for two years, but I keep telling people my age to move here, it's a really lovely place to be, I work here, I love East Hampton, and I, I would support any move towards an ordinance to make East Hampton a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sam Sharon, I live at 128 Strong Street. It's interesting, because we heard a lot of strong statements regarding what would happen if this was passed, but I haven't heard those same kind of concerns about how the police department has been carrying out its duties for what sounds like quite a long time, according to what Chief Alberti says. So, I, I'm not sure, well, what I am sure of is that there needs to be a lot more discussion about this, an airing of people's feelings and an understanding of what it is, but the sky hasn't fallen yet, and it sounds like this has been a policy in the town for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Wayne Duchesne, Federal Street. I just want to touch up on a little something that happened a couple months ago that might tie into this. The Gazette, a number of other publications, along with Mass Live, wrote a number of articles about Northampton restaurants and underpaying their staff and the undocumented workers there. This does not just work in Northampton. I've been in the restaurant business for over forty years. We have undocumented people working in the fields, working in a restaurant, side by side with me, nobody knows where they are. My point to this is, again, to continue on that, that study that was done, is that the housing for these people seems to be almost that it's, I don't want to say it in a bad way, but it's almost their own problem or their people's problem, because it's the, in this case, we're looking whether they're Mexicans or El Salvadorians. They're living in a house, one of them is in this town, or was in this town, on West Street, that used to be a garage, and when they went and did this study, they find out that a lot of people were just laying on cots with a hot plate, working fourteen-hour days. It's not a matter of just what they are going to do or we're afraid of what they're going to do to us. We don't know where they are, and we're not asking to profile people. I'm not asking for it, but when you stop a car for speeding and you have five people that don't have a driver's license or don't have any kind of identification, they're living in our community. They need the hospitals, they need the police, they need the medics, they need the schools, but nobody knows where they are. So, it's, in my case, it's just a matter of, before we're going to start getting this about the whole problem, we're missing the basics. The world has forgot about the basics, where people are and what they're doing. Forty years I've been in this business, and I can tell you that there's not one restaurant that I've worked that did not have any kind of undocumented help in there, and they're, they're being hidden and they're being helped by people of their own, their own kind. I'm not talking about somebody that comes in and wants to marry an undocumented person, but there's, there's groups out there. What would happen if that building caught on fire? Who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for, for not enforcing this law or that law, or finding out where people are and getting them the help, getting them into housing? Is it going to be too late when we have thirty-six bodies that we have to go through because people are working together and want to hide? I don't want that on my shoulders.
Anybody else, please, feel free to come up. Feel free to come up.
Okay. My name's James Ramsey. I've lived here for 58 years, and then some. I, Joy?
Hi, James.
We go back from this?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to say, I learned something a long time ago. Rather be safe than sorry. And there are laws, and if they're, if you're illegally here, you're illegally here. I mean, it's that simple, that there are laws, and they need to be enforced. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. Mike said it well, with being a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, I just, I follow the rules. I don't know, you can't enforce some laws and not other laws. That's, that's my, I just think it's a mistake.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to?
Thanks for having this and letting everybody speak. I wanted to address a few things that I heard. First of all, the gentleman that's giving the Sanctuary City information sessions, you did say that if you weren't worried before, you shouldn't be worried after. Then why does it need to happen? If we're already doing it this way, then why does it need to happen? And then to address you, that has been here for two years, about fear, the first thing people do is say, "Oh, you must be afraid." Well, I feel like you guys are afraid, and you want to designate the sanctuary city, because you don't know what the administration's going to do. So it's a safe and sorry on the other end of the spectrum. So, I mean, either way you look at it, it's like somebody's afraid of something. So, it's not, it's not working. You have to look at the laws. It's federally illegal. They're here illegally. There are no undocumented Americans. They're just simply non-Americans that are illegally here. And a nation is defined by its borders, its laws, and its people. And if you can't shore up the borders, the laws, and the people, and then what do you have? I, I do implore you to look at any other countries that allow people to just come in, undocumented, illegally, unvetted, work or not work, and not apply for citizenship on the legal path. And as you said, there's people living here that are married to citizens. Why are they not applying for citizenship? There could be many reasons, but there are people that wait years to come here, legally come here, and, and apply for citizenship. Other countries, it takes 10 years to get citizenship. You have to come, you have to be sponsored, you have to have a skill that you can contribute to the society. There are a lot of things that are, you know, put in place for that. So, I'm not saying, like, I'm a nurse. I will care for you if you're undocumented, if you're transgendered, if you're black, white, green, I don't care. You're going to get the same care, because I am compassionate. But what I don't understand is that, I feel like the, the world is crazy right now. Like, it's crazy. This election has turned everybody into crazy people. And we just voted recreational marijuana legal. Really? It, it puts four times more tar in your lungs than cigarettes. So Massachusetts just voted that in. Okay. I don't get it. And we're trying to get kids to stop smoking, to not do drugs, do all these things, and we voted that in. So off of that soapbox, but what I'm saying is, things seem a little backwards sometimes. And if we're already doing those things, I don't think anybody wants you to use city resources to go and federal out every undocumented worker, or illegal alien, or illegal immigrant, and put them in jail and wait for ice. I don't think that that's it. But I think the designation of sanctuary city invites trouble. It says, "Hey, East Hampton's a sanctuary city, so we're not going to get in trouble if we go there." And whether 90% of the undocumented people come, and they're working, and they're fined, and 10%, or 1%, even 1% is violent, that's 1% too much. And to, to have that designation is, it really is, it's scary. And I just don't understand, like, I'm not a lawyer, but I can read, and the Constitution gives clear authorization to the federal government to oversee immigration. So by, you know, saying, "To heck with you," we're, we're breaking federal law. And I just, I don't, I don't think it's a good thing to put out there. I don't think, like, we're just, in a way, you can say, "Oh, look," to your kids, you can say, "Look, we're being human." And then in the other way, it says, "We had to break the law to be human." Does that make it, it's okay? It's like, no, let's follow the law. Let's do it another way. Let's figure out how we can protect people another way. So having a designation of sanctuary city, which I understand is not, you know, a legal definition, because I've read that as well, but, you know, the 10th Amendment states that, you know, the states have their rights, and they can make their decisions without overreach of the federal government, but we see that, that that is not true. Like, they, the federal government overreached in Arizona when Arizona wanted to pass it. I think it was Senate Bill 1070, I read, which had to do with immigrations, and they, it was Arizona v. United States. And the Supreme Court ruled in the United States' favor to wipe out the laws that they wanted to put in place, which was, you can stop them, you can hold them, you can make them carry, you know, ID. So that was overreaching, you know, into people's, you know, civil rights, because definitely, I'm sure, citizens were held. So the federal government can overreach when it wants to, so it depends on what side it's on. So if, you know, if they want immigration to be successful, then they'll overreach and stop, you know, people from enforcing laws, stop border control from enforcing these things. But now the new administration's coming in, so maybe they're going to overreach, which it really isn't, is start enforcing the laws. We don't know what's going to happen, so everybody's afraid on both sides. But I will, I do agree that it's federally illegal, we're breaking the law. If there was no difference between designating sanctuary city and what we're doing now, then why start? How about we adopt a wait-and-see attitude? Let's see what the administration says. I highly doubt they're going to come in and say, "East Hampton Police Department, you must go knock on every door and goose-step and, you know, look for undocumented workers." I know it's not going to happen. They're here, they're living among us, that's fine. We don't have to, you know, be, you know, rotten and mean, but we also don't have to invite it and say, "Hey, look at us, come see us." Because honestly, our schools are overtaxed, they're overburdened. It's like me getting into a size six pants. Okay, bringing more people into, it's just going to burst at the seams. We don't have the, the funding for our schools, for our, you know, police. We don't have it to bring more people, invite them in here, and, you know, support them, whether they're working or not, and, you know, the people that...
Could you just for us try to wrap it up?
Yeah, sorry. The people that hire the, people that are not documented should have recourse as well, because they're, they should be fined, or taxed, or something, because you're, you're hiring somebody who knows that he's here illegally. And this, the law does say, one, I'll, I'll end with this quote, sorry, that, it is U.S. Chapter 1324, that it does say that, "In violation of the law or subjugation engages in any conspiracy to commit any of the preceding acts, aids or abets of the commission of any of the preceding acts shall be fined and imprisoned up to five or 10 years." And that is knowing or in reckless disregard of the fact that such coming to entry or residence is or will be in violation of the law. So it's a law. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Plous, also, my name is Troy Gray. I live at 63 Clark. I own my home, and it's a two-family home. We rent an apartment. I'm sorry, I just got super weak and lightheaded standing there, waiting for my turn. I am standing here in support of the sanctuary city, or ordinance, or whatever it is, for, for those who are like, "Well, let's wait and see." We don't know what the new administration is going to do. It's absolutely true, we don't, but we do know that that administration ran 15 months or 18 months of a campaign based on fear-mongering, hate, and oppression, and, and we have no idea what's going to happen based on that. The other side is, well, you know, people are saying, "We don't know what, what was going to happen, so why not wait?" Well, those are the fears that people are talking about. So one is, "I'm afraid of the boogeyman," or "I'm afraid of what a man said he was going to do." So we need to say right now, also, I'd like to point out, anybody that's talking about, "This is illegal." We just heard the chief of police say that, "This is kind of, this is just the way it works. This isn't a law run amok. This is not, you know, chaos and anarchy. This is kind of just the way it is now." But it's also us as a community saying, "We believe in love, not hate, and we believe in people that are just trying to support their families, and just trying to put some food on the table, and just trying to get by, and maybe one day they'll get that, the legal status that everybody wants them to have so very, very bad. But for now, we're just going to let them not be afraid to call the cops, because a real criminal is in their building or in their neighborhood." Right now, the, the gentleman that quoted the statistics, he's sitting over there in the pledge shirt, about crime being worse in areas where this happens, that's not a myth. If you're scared to call the cops because you are an illegal immigrant, then the criminal that you are trying to call the cops on gets to go and keep on doing crimes for a while more. And that is not safer. So I am in support of this 100%. I think I have also used up more than my time. Thank you all.
So, again, Aaron Levin, District 3. And again, I'll go on record as being in support of both of Councilor Hayes's proposals here, but I did want to give, well, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the chief of police. Obviously, your involvement in this is critical, as this is certainly the beginning of what's probably going to be many conversations, both at the council level, subcommittee level, and so forth. I do want to give the city council credit for having language that already exists here in East Hampton, which I hope will be guiding in your conversations and in your conversations with your constituents. And I'm referring back to what was dated on January 4th of 2016, the East Hampton City Council resolution pertaining to discrimination and intolerance. And it begins with some very, very powerful words, which I hope will stay close to you, and that is simply, "Whereas one of the fundamental core values of the city of East Hampton is to treat all persons with respect and dignity." Not just pretty words, very, very important words, and if those really are, if that really is one of our core values in this city, then I hope that that will stick with you as we go forward. In fact, I hope that will stick with everyone as we go forward. One of our fundamental core values is to treat all persons with respect and dignity. It does not say all residents of East Hampton, it does not say all of, it does not, it does not, it does not discriminate, and neither should we. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
First question I have to ask is, who's going to pay for it?
Just for the record. You could just say your name and for the record.
I beg your pardon?
You didn't even address, just for the record. I'm sorry, just for the record.
Again, who's going to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
How many people are coming over here?
If we could just have for the record, we could have your name and address?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, if you could just have your name and address for the record?
Sure. Alberta Carlo, 4 Campbell Drive.
Thank you, sorry.
Who's going to pay for it? How many people are coming here? As long as the chief is here? How many people are we going to have here? And A, are you going to handle, is your department big enough? And this isn't a criticism, I'm just asking you a question. Are we getting 100? We're getting 10,000? Madam Mayor, are you prepared to lose federal grants? Because it sounds like the new guy in town is going to yank them all if you don't obey Washington now. And that's not a political statement, that's just a view. But are you prepared to have East Hampton lose whatever federal grants that we're getting? Another question I ask myself is, how many, if any, of you don't live in this city and are here voicing your opinion? Because as far as I'm concerned, you don't have a right to do it. It's my money and the other taxpayers' money that we're playing with here, and they're the only ones that count. Not if you're living in Northampton, Florence, Holyoke, or wherever the case may be. What value are these people offering us when they come here? And as that other gentleman said, they have their own particular lifestyle that most of you people wouldn't have a clue what it's about. Years ago, when the Russians moved into Westfield, they drove like maniacs. They had no clue what a speed limit was. It took them a while to adjust to it. And I'm just saying, these are the things you're going to have to put up with. Is the, is the police department large enough? And if not, what's it going to take to make it so? I would like to see us keep our own house clean, or clean our house. We've got roads in this city that need to be fixed. And the most classic case of that is the center of town, the Rotary. And that's not a knock against you, Madam Mayor. It's just a statement of fact. But I'm totally against it if I have to shell out 10 cents' worth of my tax money to promote these people to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else who would like to address the council on this? I brought a few.
My name's Evan Ray. I'm a happily tax-paying homeowner, living at 2 Cherry Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. I'm here to voice my support for any sort of executive order or ordinance in favor of something like a sanctuary city. I have three data points to contribute to the conversation. The first is a recent Pew Research Center study published in 2016, stating that an estimated 66% of unauthorized immigrants nationally had lived in the United States for at least 10 years. These people are not new members of our communities. They're long-term members of our communities with relationships to us, that I would not want to see disturbed or destroyed. Second, many people are concerned about the potential for violent crimes, but there are a number of studies indicating that immigrants are in fact not more likely to commit violent crime than the rest of us. In particular, there is a study published in the journal Criminology in 2009, looking at trends, cross-sectional time series analysis of metropolitan areas, showing that as immigrants move to metropolitan areas, crime levels decreased. So we don't need to be afraid of that. And my third point is that many of us are concerned about expenditures. First, we don't need to worry about that. It's in fact, as one person pointed out earlier, cheaper to not enforce immigration laws here with our local forces. And second, undocumented immigrants in 2010 paid an estimated $150 million in state and local taxes, so they're contributing to our coffers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, could I ask him to repeat those? I didn't hear, I wasn't able to hear.
Maybe he could. Sir, do you have those written down?
I, yeah, I have all the studies.
Because maybe, I think Councilor Kuznickel would like to see the numbers at some point.
I would appreciate that information. I was unable to, kind of drifted off as you looked into the audience, and the microphone didn't get your, your speaking.
Okay, we'll try to keep going here. If you could just say your name.
Evan, Evan Roy.
McGandrew World, I'm at 34 Pleasant Street. And just real quickly, I, I, I'm from Texas, so I'm going to tell a little bit of a folksy story, but don't worry, it's short. Anyways, I was born in El Paso, I grew up in Georgia, and then I moved back to Texas. The second Klan rally I'd ever seen was in the backyard of my best friend's house. There was like this big empty field. They were Jewish, and his mother was terrified after that. Since the election now, one of my child's... Since the election now, one of my child's classmates is a Muslim, and the look of terror when I see her come in to pick him up after school is the exact same look of terror of my best friend's mother after that Klan rally. And this ordinance is not about, uh, just, you know, uh, protecting people who are here illegally, it is also to comfort people that are actually afraid. And that's pretty much all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, thank you very much. I just want to say, Chief Hobery, if there's any point you want to make a statement, you can jump in front of the line.
No, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure in case you're there. Okay, next, next in line then, um... I just wanted to get, in case ever is a opportunity, it's always there for you, but meanwhile, sir, if you could just come up, or who is next?
He's just waiting.
Oh, okay.
He gets cuts.
I'm sorry?
He gets to cut in.
Yeah. So is there any, okay.
So, my name is Miriam Ansara, 359 Main Street. I, um, I moved to East Hampton sort of by accident about ten years ago, and I have to say that I love it here. And one of the reasons I love it here, besides the fact that there's farms to go to and get fresh food, and there's the wonderful ECA Plus, and there's, oh, there's just so many things, is the range of views in this city. And I have been really interested to listen to what people have said tonight, even sometimes when I think it's been factually a little wrong. It's, um, been interesting, because there's nothing that, anyway, it's a very interesting city, and this is a very interesting discussion, that I think is so important to have in this part of the 21st century. And though we're coming to the end of, um, the public remarks, I really hope that people will continue this discussion at the forum that we're having. Uh, we forgot to put the date on it, but it's next Thursday, the 15th. And we're going to ask people to come, that represent all different views, and just talk about it, because what I like most about the city is the way we actually come together as a community. Yes, we sit in corners and we talk trash about either the newcomers or the old timers, but we don't do that in reality. We just sometimes think we think that way. But we all come together when there's a reason to, and I hope we will around this too. I know a number of undocumented people as well, and one of the things that I worry about is if the parents of some of the children I know get taken away, who's gonna take them home from school? And, um, they're part of our community too, and I want them to be safe. I want everybody who's lived here for decades and decades and generations to be safe, and I want all of us newcomers to be safe too.
Where's the forum?
Ah! We've announced it a few times, and we have flyers. It's, uh, it's going to be at Eastworks. We're waiting for final confirmation of the space, but we've told that it's final enough that we can announce it. So it's in the community room, Room 160 at Eastworks, next Thursday at seven o'clock.
Yes.
Yes. Yep. So we have flyers, we hope you come. Jeff Napolitano, who has all kinds of information, is the director of AFSC for Western Massachusetts, will present, and then we'll just have questions and discussions from there. And we're gonna have some people, some other people, who either are business people, or hopefully some of our city officials, or teachers, or farmers, who can talk about the issue from their perspective, as well as all of you. So thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public, or?
We're just, we just wanted to finish up, and you're welcome to go after us, but again, Chief, again, the, you know, I, again, I just wanted to alleviate a lot of the miscommunications and the reason that, you know, that, that we're here and to discuss it. Anytime an issue comes to the city, we do what we always do. We discuss it all together, we work on it together, and we bring it out together publicly. So the reason the chief is here is really to assure you of what our policies are now, you know, what our safety is now, so that you would know what we have now. And again, you know, I, obviously, we've reviewed many, many parts of this, and looking at what the other communities have done that you're requesting is, is exactly what the policies that we have in place now are. We're not interested in breaking any laws, we're, you know, so there's a lot of miscommunication out there. And again, I'm sure it's almost always based on either the information that you have not had, which is why we're here, and also fear. So, um, that's what we're trying to alleviate. But again, I have the chief here so that he could tell you what our policies are on undocumented immigrants now, and the changes that have happened in your communities have not changed those policies. So the, and what the surrounding communities have done, as I said earlier, is they have adopted, uh, well, in other words, they've had executive orders, which just basically list those policies, hoping, and the reason for that, why reiterate policies, the reason for that, is to alleviate fear. So people know what policies you have in place, but they are the state policies and the federal policies. But that way, you know, you know what we have, and it's a matter of providing information. So we're not here interested in breaking laws, we're not here, you know, just trying to provide you with information and, and a time to discuss it. So, and I hope you will attend some of the informational discussions. Jeff is a wealth of knowledge, as, you know, a lot of information has been researched. And I can tell you that the area mayors, um, you know, with your Hoyoke mayor, and I spoke to Mayor Narckowitz today in person, they were just labeled "the sanctuary city," which is not a correct label.
Want to just follow up again?
I just wanna maybe clarify a couple of things. I'd like to thank Counselor Smith for her due diligence and extensive research in this, in this topic. We've had some, uh, some pretty interesting discussions. I just want to bookend. I'm not gonna get into the politics of, of this topic. I'm not a politician, it's not, to some degree, it's not my job. I will say this, what I, what I don't want to get lost is, regardless of your citizenship status, race, creed, color, planet you come from, as I said earlier, if you see something, say something. If you see something, say something. We have policies in place that will protect immigrants if they are victims or witnesses, if they see something, come forward and say something. There are, we, we have, um, safety valves in place to protect you. Come, tell us, help us. You know, my, my job, my, my officer's job is extremely difficult. As I said, um, during my nomination hearing to the council, one of the most difficult things that I find in law enforcement and policing is the cooperation of the community. It's not always there, everybody always has good intentions, but when the rubber meets the road, a lot of times, the good intentions fall by the wayside. If you see something, say something. I don't care where you're from, honestly, I don't, I don't care where you're from. And I say that with a background in narcotics trafficking, um, from cartels, and a background of terrorism. So I know a lot of these arguments, I know why, um, people think what they think, I understand both sides of it. And, and even in my own personal life intimately, I understand the issue of immigration. For me, for my officers, I just want to make sure, I go to bed every single night thinking about 16,000-plus people's safety and the safety of their families. That's, that's my job, that's my, that's the cross I carry for the job that I do for this community. So, again, your immigration status is immaterial to me if you're a victim, a witness to crime. If you're a criminal, that's a different story. If you're a criminal, that's, that's, that's gonna be a problem for you, because in addition to going through the court process, you're gonna get the DOC, and then, you know, you may very well get deported. But if you brought that light to you, to yourself, because you're a criminal, then that's what happens. That's the laws that are in place, and that, those are the mechanisms that are in place. With regard to the law, immigration law is the responsibility and duty of the federal government. It is not the responsibility and duty of local law enforcement. Local law enforcement's job is to keep our community safe. If you're a criminal and your, and your immigration status here is, is not, um, up to par, by the time you get through the process, what we deal with you criminally, whatever happens to you with your immigration status is gonna be the responsibility of the government. I do not have anybody on Immigration ICE, Department of Homeland Security Task Force, so we can check that box, doesn't happen, we don't have that issue here. I'm not going around knocking on doors looking for immigrants. I don't have time, I don't have the manpower, as, as you guys had said earlier. But for me, the most important thing that I want to convey to everybody is, if you see something, say something. I don't care where you're from. To protect our community, protect me, my family, you and your family. Thank you.
I came last, I'm sorry. My name is Laura Scott, I live at 19 Plain Street in East Hampton. I was waiting, because I thought all these folks were waiting to talk. I should have deferred to you and let you go first, I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to say that I, I think that we all understand at this point, hopefully, that this is, was a thoughtful consideration put forth in an attempt to codify what were policies that were already in place and have been for a long time. Personally, myself and the people in my community and my family that I've talked to, we see this as an opportunity to, um, to send a clear message that, um, in, in the face of what can sometimes be ignorance, or hatefulness, or dissidence, that we're gonna send a message of solidarity and community for everyone that lives here, and for everyone who chooses to raise their family and work and go to school here. And not, I urge everyone who is here tonight and who will go home and talk to your families, not to mistake empathy, generosity, compassion for weakness. Uh, I believe that it's actually a greater sign of strength. We can be, as a city of 16,000 people, a shining example in this laboratory of democracy. We can demonstrate for people how we can come together at polar opposites of a spectrum, and polar opposites of a really contentious argument, and, and put forth thoughtful statements with respect, with civility, and leave here maybe with a little bit of a more open mind and a greater understanding of where the other one is coming from. So I thank you, Jennifer, for bringing it forth, I thank the council for letting everyone speak, and everyone for showing up tonight, that this requires active participation. Whether I agree with you or not, I, I appreciate you for coming tonight, for speaking, I think that's valuable, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Going once. You know, I, I would like to say, you know, we're really fortunate having a smaller community, and I know there's a lot of concern and fear. I would take it, recommend you take advantage of Coffee with a Cop. There's a great way to meet officers, relay your fears, talk to them about the community, talk to them about your concerns. I think it's a really great thing that's out there, and maybe on the Facebook page, I assume that will be?
Of course.
Okay, so, it's a little plus for that. So, um, no, no one else, anyone want to say, we can move on. So I had such a Counselor Hayes that we could, after this part, just so that all you people know, these are indeed gonna be referred to the ordinance subcommittee, so Counselor Hayes, if you would like to make some, um, notions out of it.
Sure. So we have two proposals going forward. One of them does speak to looking into having us be a designated sanctuary city. Let me just pull this up. And I did want to read the email that the mayor and all the city councilors received, which was the impetus for putting this forward. We received an email with more than 50 signatures of individuals who wanted to put this forward, and I think it's a good example of why we did decide to put this forward. Stop it. So, uh, Dear Mayor Kadjar and Counselor, we, the undersides, live and work in your community. We treasure the understanding that our diversity is what makes us beautiful, and that learning from people with different backgrounds and cultures is the single most valuable way to grow stronger as a community. On November 16th, President-elect Trump vowed to penalize cities that had passed sanctuary ordinances by withholding all federal funding. He blamed sanctuary cities for harboring dangers, dangerous illegal aliens who commit crimes against real Americans. We found his words deeply unsettling and hateful. In fact, sanctuary cities make communities safer for everyone involved. Involvement of local police with immigration, enforcement erodes immigration trash in the legal system. When immigrants, both those with documents and those without, do not trust their own local police, they are less likely to report crimes, and they are less likely to cooperate with local law enforcement. Cities with sanctuary ordinances have reported decreases in crime and overall increases in public safety. We respectfully request that East Hampton pass an ordinance declaring that we are a sanctuary city, formally promising to protect our immigrant neighbors and friends, family members, and coworkers from unjust racial profiling and increased public safety for all, regardless of immigration status. By passing this ordinance, the city of East Hampton would forbid the use of municipal funds for assisting federal agencies in seeking out and penalizing undocumented immigrants, and prohibit municipal employees from inquiring about individuals' immigration status. Furthermore, it would declare that the city of East Hampton will not violate the Fourth Amendment at ICE's request. The vast majority of undocumented immigrants in our city want nothing more than to provide for their loved ones and contribute to making the city a better place for everyone. They are an integral part of the lush, colorful fabric of our society. Though there may be need for immigration reform, we need more sanctuary cities, not less. We ask that the community work together to stand up to President-elect Trump's bullying and declare that the East Hampton will protect the rights of immigrants and stand for racial inclusivity and the celebration of cultural differences respectfully. And the names go on, and those will all be added to the public record. It's rare that we get an email with this many signatures on it, so I, it makes perfect sense for us to act and bring everybody together and have a conversation about it and see what's the best way for us to move forward. And clearly, there's a lot of public input on both sides. And I just want to reiterate again, I did receive emails from both sides. I'm going to submit them. Everybody's voice that reached out via email will be put into the public document, so nobody is, you know, marginalized or not heard or anything like that. So, um, do you copy of it easily? I just have it in my email. So with that being said, I would like to read the resolution that we have coming forward for sanctuary city.
We don't have one.
I mean, um, sorry.
Motion, okay.
What motion?
You could just, you could just say, "A motion to move the..."
Motion to move to?
Sanctuary city to sub, East...
I don't have to read it?
No.
Okay. So motion to move the consideration of becoming a sanctuary city to the Ordinance Subcommittee.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second, to move the consideration of sanctuary city designation to Ordinance Subcommittee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Staying? Motion passes.
And I have a question. I did want to announce that Counselor Smith has decided to co-sponsor that ordinance with me, which I thank her for.
Now, also, you want, must move the human right one?
Sure. There's also been a request to put together a human rights organization, or a human rights commission for East Hampton, and to take a look at having that come forward, especially in terms, um, in response to the Mount Tom hate crime that happened. We think it's important that we have a commission that focuses on human rights, so we have an ability to put a response in place in case, you know, anything like that comes forward. And it does speak to our resolution as a city council about treating everybody fairly with respect and with dignity, and then we will have a board that will be able to, you know, track and enforce, and hopefully help educate the community, and we can move forward in a more culturally diverse and happier and friendlier place. So I would like to move that to Subcommittee as well.
Okay, just, I just, it looks like that was written incorrectly on it, so just so I could say, we're making a motion to move the request for a human rights committee or commission to the Ordinance Subcommittee, correct?
And also, Counselor Krasinski is also co-sponsoring that with me as well.
I'm sorry, and what?
And Counselor Krasinski is co-sponsoring that with me as well.
We really don't have that, but that's okay. Okay, so, we have a, we have a, a second, is there someone for a second there?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Oppose and staying? Motion passes. Okay, so those two have been moved to Subcommittee. For those of those who are here, for those who topics, they're in Subcommittee now, there'll be more public hearings and, and opportunities for public involvement. So, if that's your primary interest, you're free to leave, we're gonna go on to other city business at this point. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
I'm going way back. I'm not sure as to what minutes we've accepted.
Accepted them all.
But I don't know who was absent on what.
Oh, that's why.
I abstained on the day that I was...
I abstained on the 19th. Or, no, not the 19th.
I wasn't trying to give you a hard time. I'm in the middle of a head cold. My ears are...
I, I put it forward after the...
Okay, I'm sorry, we're, we're...
Yep, absolutely. Everything's online.
Stay and listen.
Yep, it's part of the city council packet, and I put it on my Facebook page, and it's also in the Mass Live article.
Mass Live, where?
Article, it was a Mass Live article. Yeah.
Never been on there, but okay.
Okay, so, we have to actually...
Do you have an email that we maybe could send you?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
If you'd like.
Email, okay?
Sure, yes.
Sir, we have to move on with the meeting. If you could just please, just write that down, and...
One, one second recess, or...
Just keep it going. Just keep it going.
It'll just be thirty, twenty seconds.
Yeah. The citizen... Okay, I'm sorry, sir, people in the room, if you could just, just move on so that we can continue to be in existence.
What?
Okay, any conversations, if you could please move them outside so we can continue the meeting.
They'd have brought back to the committee.
Thank you very much.
Lots more to follow.
Thank you, sir. Okay, where do we leave off? Correspondence.
Counselor Derby, did you? Is it the Parac?
Oh. Yep.
I can't do it, okay.
I can, just answer. Okay. We did receive a memorandum from the East Hampton Retirement Board, which talked about the required fiscal year appropriation, 2.91 million. And so, if anybody is interested in seeing that, I imagine the city clerk has probably that.
Okay. Our standing committee is finance, Counselor Coniff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one new item, new business. I'll do a first reading on that, and then make a motion to move it to subcommittee. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. Amount requested, $49,229.24 to be transferred from the reserve fund, to be transferred to police, full-time, regular salaries. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the chief of police's retirement. So, I would like to make a motion to move that to the finance subcommittee, meeting effective next Wednesday, the 14th.
Second.
Yeah, motion to second to move the department will transfer $59,229.24 to finance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
That's all.
Okay, and so, the next meeting will be...
12:14, next Wednesday.
12:14, next Wednesday. Okay, thank you very much. And no public hearings, is that...
Not, no.
Yeah, public session, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was unaware that Counsel Carrie was not going to be here tonight, so I do not have an update on the on-street parking for the section of Pleasant Street, but we do need to set a meeting. I'm going to ask for another 60-day extension on the Pleasant Street parking, because that expires at the end of January. Are you sure I'll do that in the form of a motion?
At the end of January? That's another month. Why don't you wait until it's...
We have two meetings between now and then. Do you want a 60-day extension, or do you want us to wait until it gets closer?
I can wait. Makes no difference to me.
Okay, so...
I don't like to cut it that close.
Yeah, okay.
I'll forget.
Did you, did you make a motion?
She moved, I seconded.
Okay, so, my motion is second to for a 60-day extension. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Thank you.
60-day extension on that request. Does that conclude?
That's, uh, no. So, we also need to schedule a meeting to talk about whether we are going to remove mobileite without prejudice, or whether we're going to deny their application, because we've gotten conflicting advice for both sides. So, we need to sit and have a meeting, have that together. But we haven't scheduled a meeting, so I should probably do an extent, a 30-day extension on that one, so that I can get a meeting in, and then have it come to full council. So, I will ask for a 30-day extension, the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion, a 30-day extension on the Liberty Street mobileite poll. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And doesn't look like there's any new business related to public safety, so this concludes.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Counselor Smith.
Thank you. The appointment subcommittee met at 5:30 tonight and considered six different mayoral appointments. Each of these were a reappointment, so I am going to read each of them and make a motion that they are moved to the full council for consideration. First name is Jay Ryan, who is serving on the Conservation Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/19. Second is Daniel Butrick, for the Department of Conservation Commission, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. Jay Ryan for the CPA Committee, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. John Bruner for the CPA Committee for the Historical Commission, I'm sorry, Historical Committee, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. Maren Goldstein for the Energy Advisory Committee, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. And Floyd Hicks for the Main Street Cemetery, with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayoral, what, uh, motion to second to approve those six mayoral appointments? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And would like to move a new appointment, mayoral appointment, to the subcommittee. So, for Marley Stoddard, for the ECA Plus Committee, with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Second.
For a motion, second, to move the mayoral appointment, Marley Stoddard, ECA Plus, to appointments subcommittee. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And our next meeting will be on December 21st at 5:30.
Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, we are starting to get a full docket here.
Yeah.
So, we are going to, I am going to schedule a meeting for the 14th, which is a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM. I don't think we're going to need to be up here, because we are not going to be looking at the sanctuary city ordinance at that point. I think it would be prudent to attend the forum that's going to be the next night, and, and gather more information, and also, I think, get clarification on whether this should actually be an ordinance, or whether this is something that is, you know, something that comes from the mayor's office, or whatever the process is, just to make sure that we're doing this in the correct way. So, again, we're not going to be looking at the sanctuary. We, we will put the Human Right Commission on our agenda, in case we have time, to take a look at that, and, because I really don't know much about it yet, so, I'm interested in being able to discuss that with the committee. I do notice that we do have some new business, so I, I, I think that this is something that I should be moving, Counselor Kuzinski's memo. Are we, am I moving this to ordinance subcommittee?
Or Counselor Kuzinski could do it, if you...
If you would like to do.
Read the memo and discuss that.
Okay, so, we can wait on that, I guess. But I, I think it is, it is good to know that the, at least myself on the committee, has done a little background work previously to make sure that we are prepared for this. So, I think that we are going to be in a, in a good place to move forward. I've read a lot of ordinances from Colorado and Washington. So, that being said, that concludes our...
What about this one?
Oh, I have another one?
I don't...
Uh, that usually goes to finance.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can move that to finance now, but usually, financial ordinances go to finance.
Okay, we'll swing back to...
It's okay.
So, I'm sorry, Counselor Kuzinski, we're not moving that to...
We can move that, yes, sure.
Okay.
Shall I?
Sure.
Just to read part of the, the letter to the counselors, that in light of the passage of the marijuana, the initiative petition for a law relative to the regulation and taxation of marijuana, I believe it to be important for East Hampton to begin discussions on this matter sooner rather than later, in a way that will engage the participation of the whole community, perhaps as we had tonight, so that everyone can feel that their, their input is heard in the community, so that we can be ahead of the curve and fully prepared for the, as the Commonwealth moves forward with the legalization of marijuana. Some of the issues that just came, that I think, I think we need to address include, for example, where will we have retail locations? What zones? If any? Where, how many locations? The school committee voted unanimously at their last meeting to request that we limit the number of locations to 20% of the possible number of locations that would be allowed by the initiative petition. They will be bringing that forward to all, to the full council. That matter should be discussed. Along with that, I'm sure there, some of their issues may have to do with the minimum distance for a retail location. Currently, according by the initiative petition, it's 500 feet. What are the hours of operation? 24 hours a day, 8 hours a day? That becomes another, another topic to think about. The signage issues, and what we do about advertising to minors, advertising directed toward minors. So, those issues, I think, all are fair game for this discussion in subcommittee and back into the council, as we consider the Commonwealth going into basically uncharted waters. I think...
For alcohol.
For, for marijuana, uncharted waters, except for the states that are already have, have passed the, these ordinances. And I think that's good to follow, and I'm glad we're reading more about it in Colorado and Washington. So, I would like to move this matter to ordinance.
Second. A motion, second, to move the discussion concerning ordinances relating to the marijuana legalization to ordinance. Additional questions or comments?
Just would like to say, I'm sorry, one other thing occurred to me. This did pass 62% to 38 approximately in East Hampton, so it's here. We need to discuss it, and make sure that we bring the right face to our community and to the legalization of marijuana.
It's motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Does that conclude, Counselor Derby?
Yeah, I would like to put a tentative date out for looking at the Sanctuary City ordinance slash resolution, and I think that probably would be, it'll be in the new year, Wednesday, January 11th is our tentative date to look for that.
Okay.
You're saying look for that for a subcommittee...
For a subcommittee meeting.
Meeting on that topic.
Will be like a larger forum, or does it begin with a small?
I mean, I think it's going to be large by nature.
Okay.
I think that's going to be our, you know, we'll have that meeting specifically for that topic.
For that information, okay.
This is ordinance subcommittee?
Yep.
On the 11th?
On the 11th, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so, Counselor Coniff, thank you. Counselor Coniff, you want to grab that finance last?
I'd like to make a motion to consider amending the city ordinance, Article 4, Section 2-76 to 2-80. These sections were created by the adoption of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 57.